That's not, not unusual.
That happens every place virtually.
But this is being videoed. And there are people watching it from home right now.
Yeah, not very many though.
Come on in, we're good for it.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. It's six thirty, so let's get started, we'll get right into it.
I thought I would recruit you.
We're called to order the Tuesday, January twenty eighth work session for the Tenino City Council. You all excuse me, excuse me with my mask. I'm supposed to be safe because I had COVID, but I just did not want to come to this and be spouting and talking without it on. So if I'm hard to hear, please let me know. First thing on the agenda is the review of the, of the city council agenda for tonight. If you want to take a, lose you through it and let me know if there's anything else that you.
Well, for tonight, like I was telling you, Dave, we may have the health, the director of public health for Thurston County here.
Sounds good.
Explain what the new system is. They're going from five county commissioners to a five, still a five seat board, but just three county commissioners and two people, two electives from, one from South County, working for North County.
All right, I think that's a great idea, so hopefully. Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Okay, anything else on the agenda that? Anybody needs changed or wants to add? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to council priorities. We're gonna do this last meeting, but since Jason was gone with the. Yeah, so do we have a list of those?
Um, I did have one at the last meeting, I might not have drafted for this one.
I guess we can also still do the, at least the mayor pro tem. We know that one and I can see if. So anyway, one of the first one, let's just go talk about mayor pro tem. Every year we elect the new mayor pro tem, so that will be open for 2025. Obviously Linda is our current mayor pro tem, so is there any discussion around, around that? Or before we get to the actual.
I want to say that I'd like to stay on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, might as well, just keep it the same.
Yeah. No worries.
And then, I don't know if.
No.
We have all those liaisons, we do need to kind of, I don't know, do you have one you can print easily? But, because I think we need to make, I think we need to make notifications to some of them have to have notifications, so if there's any.
I think solid waste has to have notification.
So is Mark.
TRPC, TIB. But then there, then there's the school board, fire commissioner, be that.
Maybe we just start with, is there anybody that would like to switch roles up and not continue on where they're at?
No.
Because if everybody's content.
We don't need to worry about it.
We don't need to worry about it.
Okay, good.
That was quick.
All right, well.
Do we want to talk about like Public Works?
We don't want to drag our feet here.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of touch on that.
We did talk a little.
Do you think we can get him a list of the different committees that we have? Just so he knows.
Kind of see what we.
Yeah.
Thank you. That'd be a good idea.
I, I did just want to bring up too, just for discussion here. You know, I know we started, was it last year sometime, we started the Public Works kind of committee and then the Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Is, are people finding value in that? Or we're spending a lot of time, is there stuff that's happening there that people feel like are valuable? And do we want to continue that? I, I've kind of heard two sides of the story, I've heard other.
For Public Safety, you can leave that off the agenda unless we have something to watch, you know.
Yeah, I, I've just heard two things when I've been to these conferences with other cities and they say, you know, to sometimes it ends up taking more time and effort than they really, you know, they're not learning anything new or. So if we want to continue, that's your prerogative.
Yeah.
But is this the thought that is out there?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I'd like to continue with the Public Works, that's of value to me, to understand what's going on, what's, what's coming down the road and whatnot. And it's only once every two months or so, it's not a huge.
It's too, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, council retreat, we talked about that last meeting, is there any thoughts people want to speak about we didn't really?
No, I said what I wanted to say, so.
We have somebody in the audience, can you explain what that council retreat is?
Sure, every year, we have for the last several years, had a council retreat at the start of the year, just to kind of talk about what our priorities are and those kind of things. We usually hire somebody for about three thousand dollars to spend half a day with us and going over, you know, priorities for the city and those kind of things. Just because of the budget concerns this year, we basically slashed every penny we could, down to the, you know, twenty dollar level. We had initially said we didn't, we weren't going to have one this year, and then the question did come up, whether we really should do that still. So there was some discussion of who would do that if we didn't pay somebody and so we're still, you know, question I guess is still, still out there. If we want to move forward with that at all, but again, we can't make any decisions right now.
No, I want to move forward.
And we talked about it last time, so we can.
I think it's very important right now, the way things are happening, that we have that retreat, because I think it brings people together.
And I would agree with that, Linda, but I think if we're going to do that for the most value, we should have a professional who is able to moderate that professionally.
Well, we can't get them for nothing, they're not going to do it for nothing.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, well, if anybody wants to bring it up, is, we can add it to either this meeting or the next meeting, we can all, if somebody wants to make a motion around that.
Sorry, David, the last meeting, what was said about it?
Uh, well, it was.
Because I know Doug Ma probably won't.
No.
The discussion was that Wayne offered to help us do one.
Wayne.
And possibly the county commissioner.
Yeah, he would do it.
Yeah.
Leonard, Leonard, Wayne, Frenier and Leonard, their new manager for the county, they would do it for nothing on a Saturday for us.
So anyway, there's some kind of back and forth about.
And it's not just us, they're doing it for all of the cities that they represent.
Yeah, they're going.
South County.
Rainier, Dakota, yeah, whoever wants it, yeah.
But we would have our own separate.
We've been having our own separate.
Okay.
So that's up to the council, if you want to go have to do it, or obviously if we want to do it in another meeting, you can put it on the agenda if you want to, you know, have a discussion and vote on it. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm sorry, I forgot you were gone, so.
No, it's all good, Dave. To me, I don't know, if we have one, we have one.
Yeah.
If we don't, then I, we don't.
Okay, well, I'll wait to see what the council says on that. Federal funding emergency, was this kind of like the?
This is what you're talking about, the food bank.
Uh, just, people probably know there was a kind of a brouhaha this morning that there was canceled, a lot of federal funding was put on hold for a period of time. Of course, that caused a lot of concern, I got a call from the food bank who's primarily served by, you know, grants and a lot of federal money. And nobody really knows what's going to happen, you know, it's kind of just thrown out there without much direction, so they, they're concerned. They, you know, they don't have a big pot of money sitting there to, to keep going if they, you know, even if it's a month long, if they don't get funding, it will have a major effect on our, on the food bank and their ability to do services. So she had just called me saying, hey, what's, she asked about the food warehouse down there in the old shop. You know, if it comes down to it and they can't afford to keep paying for the facility that they're at, is there any possibility with them moving down there? I know it's not zoned right now, according to the planning commission, it'll be probably December before they get the zoning changed, you know. They're planning, planning on changing it. So I did discuss with her a little bit and I have a call into our attorney if they're, if it comes down to it and they're, you know, in a bad spot. Is there some way we can do an emergency, allow them to use that facility in an emergency, even though it's not, it's not zoned to do that? So, and who knows what will happen with this, you know, like I said.
I thought that they were gonna, there was some way that the planning commission could rush that through.
Yeah, they, when I came to the last meeting, they said it's, it's in the, it's in the thing to be changed, but by the time it goes through the public process of being adopted, then it's going to take. So I'm, what I'm thinking if we can do it.
Emergency.
Yeah, so I'm gonna just check with our attorney to make sure that's okay and if, if it's, is, if they need to, like I said, they're not sure what's happening right now, this because.
And federal funding's been put on, federal freeze has been put on hold anyway by, by one of the federal judges.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know there is concerns about how that's going to affect other organizations. I did hand out a kind of flyer from them that you should have there, that kind of shows how many people they served in 2024.
A lot.
Uh, it's a lot, it's a lot of elderly and they're serving not only Tenino and Dakota, but they're picking up, have people coming in from other areas, so. They are providing a, a big services for our community and outside, so I would like to support them if, if there's a way to do it, if they need it to try to keep them.
We can do an emergency resolution, especially since we know the planning commission's planning on switching it anyway.
That's.
Can everyone make sure their microphones are on and they're really clear on them, sorry.
Hello.
They can't hear us well.
Mine wasn't.
It was John.
We know that, well, you can call him out.
I own it, I got a big mouth, you guys should be able to hear me.
Any.
Yeah, but the people out there can't hear you, the people out there.
So well, next meeting, we'll, we'll get back to you next meeting on that and see what happens and see how they're feeling, but I just wanted to let, let you be aware that we're, we're trying to work with them if things go south to, to keep them going. Court services, I just wanted to update you on that. I had sent, I talked to the county, county administrator about providing court services to, for us, which included the actual court and a public defender and all those kind of things. I said, tell us everything and he got back to me, or they got back to me, the court, actual court services were reasonable. They were saying like forty-five thousand for the number of cases we had. But the public defender part of it was like a hundred and sixty, fifty thousand or some huge number for public defender services. And just so, reference, we spent, I think, a little over seven thousand last year for public defenders for all our cases. So I wrote him back, he wrote me and said, hey, do you want to talk more about this? I said, yeah, I'd like to explain to him that the public defender part of it, there's no way we can afford a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And he wrote back and said, hey, let's sit down and talk about it. And so I'm gonna, I'm setting up a meeting with him to see if we can get our own, Rainier just has a contract with a lawyer to provide those services. And he just works with him on a case by case basis. So maybe we can have the county still do the actual court services, but have our own person to provide public defender services. So more to come on that, but he seemed very positive that we can work something out with that.
Before you go any further, vouchers, I can't see what they say, I forgot my glasses, so we're gonna have to go with just the four.
Okay.
Really need three signatures anyways.
Yeah.
You're lucky, John, you're lucky.
I'm Irish.
Uh, the other one, Jen, you might have to help me with this one a little bit. I had asked about, we have over a hundred thousand dollars in that affordable housing trust that we have got money for each year. And so my question was, what, what exactly can that be used for? You know, if we want to do some kind of project with Habitat for Humanity, what are kind of?
Let me, let me, let me look that up and I'll, I'll look at the.
We kind of got some.
Yeah, we got a little bit of an answer from, you know, D C a long time ago.
Yeah. But anyway, we're just trying to look into what, what, how that can be used. I mean, it's nice to have a pot of money there, but if we can use it for something that's helpful for affordable housing. I just didn't, hadn't really looked into what the, the parameters were, so we're just trying to get filled in on what, what exactly.
One of the ideas that was brought up, can they hear me? One of the ideas that was brought up when this first came about was maybe we can do housing assistance type stuff.
Yeah, because we can use it for that.
Yeah.
It did look like, there were several areas that.
Like improving their energy packages and that kind of thing for people that, low, low income people, yeah.
So we'll come back on more on that and see if there's anything that we can think that might be a good use for some of that money. Uh, Jen, you ready?
Yeah, you ready?
Yeah.
We're ready. Are you ready?
Okay, so at the previous, previous meeting, or it might have been the last one, I told you guys about a couple of local businesses that had an issue with getting a building permit and. I hate when he does that. Were being penalized by our building official. So we have a letter from a local business owner, Dave Champagne, who owns Castle Realty, and he's asked me to read this on his behalf. And then I also have a letter from our building official to read on his behalf, so don't shoot the messenger. Um, my name is Dave Champagne, I am the owner of Castle Realty. As you know, I just recently purchased the red building in town at the three seven two Sussex Avenue West. My company has been the only real estate office registered in Tenino for the past seven years, but have, but as I have been encouraging businesses and residents to move to Tenino, I felt it was time for my company to show its commitment to the city, so we purchased the building. In October, we submitted an application for a sign permit. It took a long time, about six weeks, and we were asked to submit additional renderings. I am still not sure why, no one could really explain, but resubmit we did in short order. Excuse me, on December eighteenth, we were sent an email saying that our permit was fully approved. I wasted no time in forwarding this approval to my licensed sign installer as we were behind schedule. As I noticed for the first time, the sign permit fee was nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. I was really shocked by this amount. There had been no mention of nearly one thousand dollar cost for a simple sign permit at any point in our process. I asked around and discovered that it is an exorbitant fee for the permit of this nature. That said, I didn't want to whine about it, especially as I am forming new relationships in the city. I was prepared to bite the bullet and look into the why later. Two days later, on December twentieth, apparently I was sent an email from Maria at the building department informing me that my signed contractor, Signorama of Lacey and Olympia, was not yet endorsed by the city. I never saw this email. It must have slipped by in the holiday mass of emails. There was no follow-up email or call, but it was brought to my attention when a week into the new year, a large young man bearing the mantle of authority came into my office to discuss this problem. I was with a client at the time, but I told him that I would look into the, I would look for the email and get back to him at a more convenient time. He left, but not before showing me his badge. Brian seems like a nice enough guy, but really, a badge in front of my client, not cool. Anyway, I immediately found and forwarded the December twentieth email to Chad Pearson at Signorama and he said not to worry, he would contact the city and take care of it, which he did. A few days later, on January tenth, twenty twenty-five, I got good news from Maria at the building department that the matter had been resolved and Signorama was now deemed in good standing with the city of Tenino and all that was left to do was pay the nine hundred and sixty-one dollar permit fee. Yuck, but okay, I always intended to pay for it, of course. However, I was simultaneously informed in the same email that since the sign work was done prior to having the permit paid for, there would be an additional eight hundred and ninety-four dollar and fifty-four cent penalty. Wait, what? This is a very serious. Now, the grand total was eighteen hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents plus a two and a half percent processing fee. The sign itself costs five thousand dollars, but I knew what I was getting into there. I had plenty of forewarning and a firm bid. I would like to add that I have been over the emails and paperwork and so far I can't find the requirement to pay the permit fee prior to the work, nor anything about the penalty. Nor was there any mention of a nine hundred and sixty-one dollar cost for the permit fee when we were applying. Now, before any massive commission is formed to show me error in my ways, I will concede these rules and fees probably exist, but they were not prominently displayed. I may have not done the extensive due diligence to find them. My only excuse for this is I am busy, my busy conducting business and trying to bring much needed business to our town, and that is my point. Everyone I have met and talked to at the city of Tenino, current and past employees, has been really great, personable and kind. All of them have agreed that none of this seems like a very friendly or encouraging way to welcome new businesses into town and everyone has agreed that these costs are way too high. For seven years, I have been trying my best to bring businesses, customers and home buyers to this area to help the town flourish, city.
Thank you.
I have hosted cabarets in local venues, hoarded talent shows, joined the Chamber of Commerce, emceed events and listed and sold local homes and businesses. My company hosts a yearly small business bingo to support local businesses and we have formed a business directory to support good local businesses to which we can, which we can, over five hundred referrals out last year. I would be here in person tonight if not for I am leading our annual business mixer, giving over forty local businesses a platform to introduce themselves. And I will be sure to be at the next meeting and would like these issues to be added to the agenda. Jen Sharber has graciously agreed to read my statement. My first request is to be relieved of my penalties. Secondly, I would like to have an open discussion with the city council and find out why these fees are so high, why so much work is outsourced and see if there isn't a better way to guide and communicate with new local businesses in a way that makes them feel more welcome. Thank you for your time, see you in two weeks, Dave Champagne, owner of Castle Realty.
That's a long one. That's why.
Can I get a water? Um, okay, so this is from Brian Van Cluck, who is our current building inspector. Um, as you know, we use L G Nelson, he's our building official, he does the review of the plans and then Brian is boots on the ground inspector. Um, so Brian, I forwarded this to him and said, I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to rebuttal this. And he said, yes, I did see this wonderful piece about our process. I too am a bit sheepish when it comes to the badge, but I am obligated to share it to show that I am not a man of the streets. He was open with me, having the conversation and was pleasant at the time that I dealt with him. He thought that he had completed the required permit requirements. This unfortunately was not the case, which he was aware of. At the time of my visit, he said he did not get my email and he had me verify the correct email address was used. I showed him the email on my phone, which he confirmed and found in the email Maria had sent and all of their communication. He said he would deal with it later and respond to Maria. My only perspective is that we have a code that is in place for everyone per the state, county and city laws. I would love to be gracious, but this was an action of having work completed by a contractor that was not licensed with the city as well as a failure to obtain a permit. Per code, any work commencing before a permit is issued is subject to fees to the permit fee only established by the building official. In this case, we doubled the fee, the fee for permits if it wasn't done prior to installation. I would love to give this guy a break, but if we do that, then we need to do that for everyone before him that has had to pay a penalty, et cetera. Um, please feel free to share this with council, I will follow their direction whichever they choose to go. Um, so that being said, as city hall, I would like to reiterate. I've seen the email thread, he was notified his permit was ready. I have spoke to staff and said, make sure, in the future in your email, you say, your permit is ready pending you coming in to pay for it and receiving the green piece of paper. We do have a citizen in this city that does a lot of public records requests about building permits and, which is awesome, because we, we're not on every street, right? So we don't know if there's a reriff happening, so it is helpful, but if it's posted, like it's supposed to be, we, that saves staff time having to get those done. That also being said, he states back on, what was that date that he said he received the email? December tenth, eighteenth, still has yet to pay for a building permit, that work is done. It is one, a historical building, it is two, on a state highway. There are a lot of requirements and laws and rules we have to follow to keep people safe. It's not like he just hung up a, you know, plastic sign, it is a, it's a beautiful sign, it looks amazing. So there's that part. Any questions, comments for me?
I would ask a question. Okay. If we still had Rainey as the building permit officer, would those fines have been that much?
Um, I'm not sure, so Rainey did residential. He didn't generally do commercial, and this is a commercial building, so we would have still likely outsourced it to Shane if we had Shane. And his fees were actually a little bit more than what our current guy is.
That, that was my question.
Yeah, and I mean, if you compare our prices, we follow the Thurston County's book. It's not like we are choosing to be more expensive.
I just, we don't set our own fees. I just worry so much about bringing new business into Tenino.
I know, I understand.
Gives us money.
I understand.
To run the city.
But as a business owner, you have to do your due diligence, yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
I just worry about people not being able to afford that kind, those kind of permits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all over the country, counties, state, city, they're trying to work with people to bring those permits down enough so that people can afford to open businesses and things, you know, so.
I under, I understand, I understand where he's coming from.
In the meantime, what we might need to do is to address the fees on our end to see if what we can do.
We can.
No, no, I'm not talking about this one, I'm talking about in general, to see what we can do to bring those fees down.
We're trying to cover our costs of how much we have to pay our building official and.
We're not, yeah, we're not making a ton of money on these.
Yeah, we're not making money off the penalties, so. Do you need a Band-Aid?
So it's open, again, this is one of those things that the council wants, you know, that's your prerogative to, to look at these things and you have the ability to say what you think our fees are, I mean, we've caught, we've always.
I mean, he's going to be here at the next meeting, so if you guys want. I mean, he's going to be here at the next meeting, so if you guys want to.
And, like, like she said, though, the fees basically cover the cost of our, our inspectors and building officials and covers some administrative costs of our own. So this is not like it's a big, a big cash maker that we're trying to charge fees that are, so.
Right, and, and, yeah, and just so this is noted, there's another business in town that's also being penalized, and it's higher than this, because it wasn't just a signed permit, it was a very serious thing that they did prior to getting their permit issued, so.
So if you want to.
Thank you, Jen, very much.
Thank you, that's a.
And it seems to me there are two things here, one is the, the cost of the permits and the penalties. The other is the process, maybe we could look at, and, and I don't know if we have a checklist that there, people are handed out when they get the permits and.
I think there is a checklist.
But I like your idea about putting it in there.
Just very clear.
It's not any good, you pay for it.
And you have it in your hand.
Just because we say it's ready doesn't mean that you're good to do the work. It means you have to come in and pay for it.
Get it and pay for it.
Exactly, that's right.
So we can clean things up, and, yeah, I think just like everything, you see mistakes or can do things better, you make adjustments and try to fix them, so. I'm glad to listen to the council, if you have any other suggestions on how you think we can do better, but, yeah. It is just seven o'clock, so we got a little, is there anything else that anybody had that they wanted to talk about in our work session? We do have the, uh, the draft agenda for next meeting, is there anything anybody wanted to throw out there for our next meeting?
I mean.
What else? I guess since we got a little time.
Let's do reports.
Oh, yeah, we can do, we can do committee reports, I guess, yeah.
Either that or move Mark up and make back the presentation now.
Would you like to do your presentation now instead of waiting?
Well, I'm looking at the, the weather drop in those stairs had frost all over, I just want you to be safe. Just want you to be safe going home.
Mark, when you leave, would you go down the ramp, please? We don't want you to fall. Thank you.
Uh, just make sure the green light is on on this mic there, and when.
These aren't really necessary, but just so you could follow along, I, I, and I don't need to put these up on the screen unless you want me to share.
They feel like they're still warm.
I think I was sitting on them.
I'm all right.
This one will stop, this is one on my face.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, thank you for making time for me. All right, well, and I'll, I'll get your other meeting over with quicker this time. So thanks for making the time. I, I know most of you, I don't think we've met yet, but, and I'm not sure if we have yet either, so I'm, I'm.
I think you've been here since Elaine was here.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember. So I'm Mark Daly, I'm the director at Thurston Regional Planning Council. And this is a little, usually when I come down here, I'm talking about some specific piece of work that we have going on. But one of the things our council asked me to do this year was to get around to at least each jurisdiction at least once a year to just kind of provide an overview of the things that we have going on that are pertinent to that jurisdiction, which I love. Anytime you want to hear from me and you have room on your agenda, let me know. I am more than happy to come, talk about any of the work that we have going on. But I'm going to start out, just for those that don't know who we are, Thurston Regional Planning Council, we are a voluntary organization, we've been around for over fifty-five years now. We are not a part of Thurston County, that's what most people think. Thurston County is a member of our organization, but we're a separate entity. And the county, all the, the cities, the town of Yukota, two of the tribal nations, and all the special purpose districts around our region, like school districts and the Port of Olympia and the PUD are members, and tribes are members of our organization. And we work on, people come around our table to work on those things like transportation, land use, environmental planning, that cross jurisdictional boundaries. That's in essence what, what we do. And I should have numbered these, but I'm now looking at the what we do page. A big part is there are federal funds that come through our region because of TRPC. They're, they're, they're meant to go to, we're called the Metropolitan Planning Organization at the federal level. They come through organizations like ours. So our council makes decisions on where to put those funds locally. We just got done with one for twenty million dollars where we programmed a lot of, a lot of funds out locally. There's a big one that we're actually meeting with Jen about next week or the week after, or?
Uh, I think it's this week.
Is it this week?
Yeah, Thursday.
It's all a blur to me. To talk about, and this is one thing that I will say, because you talked about federal funding earlier. Today was quite the scramble. There, all of the funding that comes to our agency was also part of that hold this morning. And so there was a lot of work today to just figure out what the, what the impacts are going to be. And, and it's still uncertain. Yes, there's a stay in place, a stay until Monday, then we'll start finding out more detail about what's impacted. The reason I bring that up, though, is for the city of Tonino, as soon as we can get that project under contract, we want to get that project under contract. Because for the most part, when they're, they're looking to, to hold funds, they can look at projects that have already, that are already under contract, but they normally do not. And so we're, we're just encouraging anybody that, that we have out there that, that, and Tonino's one, where we've got the opportunity to take, work a little quicker and get something under contract, it's in our best interest to do so.
Not for this.
This is for, this is for the West Tonino Trail design. So this was funny, I talked about the twenty million that we just programmed two years ago when we did a programming of federal funds. Tonino received a two-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant to do the design for the West Tonino portion of the trail. That's what I'm talking about, getting, getting under contract. So that federal funding is a big piece of what we do. Like I mentioned, we work on land use, environmental, transportation planning, and then we've got all kinds of statistics that we keep for the cities and the county on everything from employment, population, housing, environment, education. It is a great resource for any information that you might be looking for about what, things in Thurston County. TRPC, TRPC.org will get you there. All right, I'm looking at the legislative priorities page. This is a big one because we've been, we, some of you will remember in a Ben, Ben here, when we were at TRPC, we were doing a lot of what we were calling Main Street work. And there was Main Street 507. We did work on Highway twelve for the Rochester Grand Mound area. And, and those pieces of work, I know have been challenging to get funding for. We, we did this work, we identified ways to make 507 work better for Rainier, work better for Tonino. Work, but implementing that has been a challenge because it's tough for cities of Tonino and Rainier's size to get, you know, big funding for projects. So what we did this year was we compiled all those kind of Main Street-type projects that had been identified in Thurston County and put them together for a state legislative ask. And so we're talking to the legislature about the need of almost thirty-five million for some of these projects in our more rural areas. The timing for this is really good because this Main Street idea is getting a lot of attention at the state and federal levels as well. The Transportation Choices Coalition, which is a nonprofit, they've really been advocating for, you, if you want to address safety, you need to start with some of these roads that are high speeds, and then they go straight through cities and towns. And so I, I expect, even though I don't expect to get the state funding that we're advocating for, it's mainly just to educate them on the need, so that then when a program does start, we're already well positioned to take advantage of it. And so we'll keep working with Tonino staff and others to make sure we're providing the, the most up-to-date information on, on this, because I hope that over the next couple of years, we can get some traction on some of these pieces. I, I already just mentioned, the next page is the call for projects funding. Really wanted, what I wanted to call out on that was the, the funding that we have for the West Tonino Trail project, and, and we've got a meeting coming up to talk about what we need to do to get with, with Jen, with WashDOT, and with TRPC to try and help get that moving along, getting that under contract. On the next page, you're all working on your comprehensive plan updates. And there are some state requirements with those comp plan updates that also involve, another hat that we wear is for the state, we're the regional transportation planning organization, and that's under the Growth Management Act. And one of the things that is required under the Growth Management Act is that the MP, the, I'm sorry, the RTPO, Regional Transportation Planning Organization in an area certifies that the transportation element of local comp plans are consistent with the regional transportation plan, that we are responsible for developing and getting approved by the state and feds. This isn't a big, big deal, but it's something to make sure, to be aware of, that before you adopt your comp plans, and we've been working with planning staff at all the jurisdictions, to make sure, we, we developed a checklist for how we will evaluate that consistency with the regional transportation plan, and we set out a timeline for everyone in terms of, of, when, when should you get it to TRPC so that we don't slow down your process of adopting your comprehensive plan? So that's just something to be aware of, we already tested out the checklist with city of Olympia. They're doing theirs kind of element by element, and so they already finished their transportation element. We use this checklist to, to look at certification, it worked really well, they passed, as I think, I think our jurisdictions will, but just something to be aware of on that. Because there's a lot going on around comp planning. Wanted to bring up rural transit. This is a service that is operated through TRPC, obviously serves Tonino, what you're looking at here are the, the two routes that, Route two and Route four. We operate four routes through a state grant that then TRPC hires an operator to actually run the rural transit buses. And thank you for help in figuring out the bus stop challenge that we had for, for RT. We're bringing this up to people because this is another program that we, we compete for state grants for this. We, federal, state competitive grant program to provide this service. That's great, but that's also pretty risky to be providing something like transit service via a competitive grant. And so we are talking with inner-city transit and others about just how can we shore up this service as it grows, more people are using it, to make sure that, that it's viable long-term. So nothing to report on that, just, I, I want you to know this is an important service to us that we're able to provide. We know that increasingly it's a service that people are depending on, and we want to make sure we can provide it into the future.
Mark, can you elaborate a little bit on how the funding works, especially this year, the two separate blocks?
It, it gets pretty complicated quickly, unfortunately, but when, when we, so when you look at, at the, at this page, you're not going to like this, so I'll try to do it from here. The, on Route four, oh, I'm sorry, no, on Route two, that leg between Rainier and Yelm is new. We expanded service two years ago to include, well, to reestablish service between Rainier and Yelm and to add Saturday service. So we have one grant that provides money for that, the Saturday service and the leg between Rainier and Yelm, and then we have another grant for all the base operations. That's caused a problem, we're trying to work with DOT to correct that, I think we'll be able to. But, but still, RT, as, as our region is growing, it's increasingly challenging to operate a, a service like transit through a competitive grant. So we're looking for other options there, long-term. Okay, emergency detour route study. This is a piece that we, we're about halfway through where we've been looking at, there are about fifty detour routes that have been identified all through Thurston County. And this was mainly associated with looking at what happens when there are closures of I-5. And so just as one example, what you're seeing on this page, this gray-black circle there, that's where the closure is. And then what, what we, we've used our transportation model to say, if there's a closure here, what are the places that are going to see a lot of delays in the vehicles moving? And red is bad. And so this is one of those showing where Tonino is going to get gummed up.
Cam, we do.
And you do, anytime there's an issue on 507. But, but also our model's showing that kind of the further down, the closer to the junction between I-5 and 507, the more impactful it is for Tonino. When, the ones that happen a little further north than that, they tend to really impact Yelm. And for better or worse, that impact to Yelm kind of limits how impacted Tonino ends up getting. So that's another piece we're working on, because what we're trying to do is where are these pinch points? And then are there things that we can do to how we either operate the system or relatively minor changes we could do to the system to make it operate better every day, but especially when, when that area is being used for a detour route, because there is a closure. So more to come on this. We are working on, safety is a huge area emphasis at the federal and state level. And again, roads like Sussex are, are the, the roads that people are looking at a lot. Because it is an area where, not so much in Tonino, but you all know 507 is an area where we have a decent number of accidents, and speed is an issue there. So what are the kinds of things that we can do to improve safety of our transportation system across the Thurston region? We have a federal grant for this, that grant program was also impacted by the, the hold on federal funds. We've heard this one. I don't know if we're going to get this funding freed up or not, so lots to still figure it out. And then just the last page is just some other things, I, I mentioned our regional transportation plan. That's really the, the foundational document for our organization. We, by law, update it every five years. And we are right in the middle of an update, scheduled for a draft to go out in April and to approve it in July. And so your representative, council member O'Callaghan, will be helping us work through approval of that regional transportation plan by, by July twenty twenty-five. We've been doing a lot of work on trails, and in our most recent call for projects, there was a set aside for trail maintenance, almost a million dollars for trail maintenance, which is going to be very, very helpful. I, I know from, from riding down here, especially as you get closer to Tonino, there gets to be some bumpy places, some root damage on the, on the Shehales Western Trail in particular, and so areas like that is what we're targeting for. Making sure that we've got a flat, safe surface for those trails. So a dedicated fund source for that. And we're also working on a bicycle connectivity strategy. And we're also working on a bicycle connectivity strategy, so looking all across Thurston County and seeing what all the different jurisdictions have in place and for bikes as transportation and just looking for ways that, gaps in the system or, or places where we can make some changes that would make it a little safer, make it more viable for people to ride their bikes as a, as a, as a form of transportation. And we'll be kicking that off later on in the year. So there is a lot going on at the regional level that we're coordinating on. Obviously, council member O'Callaghan keeps you up to speed on some of what we're talking about, but if ever you want more detail on any of these pieces, please just ask. I'll come down anytime.
Okay.
Very appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Coming down.
Yeah. Any, any questions or anything?
Drop home, say.
All right. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Linda, do you want to, fifteen minutes enough for you? Might as well, might as well get you out of here also if we can.
Especially since I'm limited to three, I think, so I think fifteen will do it. Be careful on those stairs.
Gloria, go this way.
Yeah, go that way.
I'm even going that way.
John, John's the only one that gets to use the stairs.
They're mine.
Well, I am Linda McKinney, the Tenino Timberland Library Manager. I have a couple of things I need to, that was a very interesting presentation. I need to go back to my notes though. Just a couple of things, as always, it's great to be here tonight. On January 12th, I believe it was, 11th or 12th, the new library in Mountain View, the new Mountain View Library in Randall opened. And if you haven't been up there, which I haven't yet, or haven't been on our website or seen on Facebook or anything like that, the building and the interior, it is fabulous. So I encourage you to do that. It's very exciting for East County to have that, that new resource. I just wanted to mention that. Also, in, excuse me, this past Saturday, we had a terrific intergenerational program at the library. We plan one intergenerational program a month, which typically is for all ages. Sometimes we skew a little bit older, but this one was for all ages and we had 33 people. The youngest was two years old and the oldest was a grandparent. I'm just, I have no idea what her age was, but it was fantastic to see everybody having fun with their family members and their friends, school. We had several kids who knew each other from schools, you know, their families came and they were having fun, interacting. We were doing projects related to initials. That was a starting point for our art and our crafts, so that was, that was a lot of fun. As I said, we do one of those once a month at least and encourage you to check the calendar at trl.org, the, under the events to see what we're up to. But I will give you a clue what we're up to this week. So besides Storytime on Thursday morning at 10:30, we will be having our Books and Bytes, our adult book discussion group. So if your New Year's resolutions include reading more, this is a great way to get you up to date about some books that you may not have known about and encourage you to read because we do the, everybody talk about the book that they've enjoyed most in the last month that they've read instead of everybody read this one book and we discuss it. So it's, I've read books that I would have never have thought I would be interested in based on people's discussions, so that's, that's a lot of fun. Also wanted to mention that on the events, you can limit by location, which I encourage you to do because across our 29 libraries, there's so many events, but don't forget to also look at our neighboring libraries too because they also have really good programs, which reminds me that Tumwater is now mostly closed because they're having a major interior refresh. And the target is to reopen the first week of June, just in time for summer library program. I believe it's, what is today, I believe it's the 27th that they are opening for limited use. There's, they are refitting their meeting room to have some computer and printing access, a small browsing section, pickup holds and that kind of thing.
It's the 27th of January.
Yes.
That was yesterday.
Oh, so, okay. I think that maybe they are open for that. It's hard to keep all the dates in my mind. And during their refresh, they will be having book babies and Storytime at the service center. So it's pretty cool to get out and do some things in the community in a little bit different ways. Okay. Speaking of which, I just wanted to let you know that Timberland hit a big milestone on January 16th. I do know that because I wrote it down, that we surpassed our 2 million digital checkouts mark for the whole library district. And so what this means is people are checking out a lot of books. I, I can't remember when the digital downloads first began, but I do know that there, we've had since 2020, obviously with COVID, we had a very big increase, I think it was 24% in the amount of digital checkouts. And every year, we've had at least 20% on top of that, so very popular service.
Tenino leads the way on that, right?
Well, very well, could be. I don't know. But a lot of people use their library without stepping foot in the library because of the digital downloads. And of course, it's convenient because you can access it 24/7, so that's great. People often wonder, I thought I'd use this moment about eBooks and e-audiobooks. People often wonder why they have to be on a holds list for eBooks because it could be accessible all the time, right? Or they wonder why the library can't get a particular title. And the short answers to those are, we have to buy use per copy, just like you have to for a book. The cost is a lot more than a physical book and the licenses expire, unlike a physical book, although physical books have a lifetime as far as use. So that's one thing. The other thing about why we can't always get the books is because publishers have different agreements, especially with Amazon. And Amazon has exclusive, they restrict books, they have some exclusive books, and that also counts for Audible, who is owned by Amazon, so it shouldn't be a big surprise. Anyway, there's a fascinating write-up about how all of this works and the pricing and the different, every publisher is a little bit different. Very interesting and you can read all you want to about it if you go to trl.org, scroll down almost to the very bottom where it says what's new. And there's a, you know, a river of articles that go through and just find the one about the $2 million, $2 million downloads and you can read about that if, if you'd like. I may be prejudiced in how interesting it is since I'm a librarian, but some people like to have that information too, so. Okay. The last thing is, I meant to have Nathaniel Ramos here tonight. We planned for him to be here tonight and I don't know, something went wrong. He's not here clearly. But I know at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, were you there this past?
No, I'm working now.
Oh, that's right, legislative session, right. But John got a chance to meet him and that was not the first time because I know Steady, you've met him through there. Anyway.
Who is it?
Nate Ramos is the, is currently the Yelm Timberland Library Manager.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah. And the reason I bring this up is because Timberland is having some juggling around of responsibilities and duties and how everything's gonna work. And we're still waiting to get the whole picture. But I do know that Nate is going to be for Tenino, Yelm and, Tenino, Tumwater. He's gonna be what they call the Regional Library Manager and he's gonna be those libraries' representative to groups like city council, like Steady, like Chamber of Commerce, for all of those three communities. So what that means is you won't be seeing me on a regular basis anymore.
Well, fiddlesticks.
Sorry, pardon me?
I said, well, fiddlesticks.
Yeah, I know. So I could miss seeing all you guys on a regular basis, but I won't be, I'm not disappearing. I will be doing all of the programming for those three libraries, not personally, but heading up a team that's going to provide the, the program at all three of those libraries. So I will be down doing programs from time to time, but I'm gonna be a little bit like a step removed and be more of the overall planning part of it. So you won't see me as much, although I will be in the library regularly. So just wanted to let you know. And probably what I'll do is, assuming Nate's available, we'll make it to the next one just to do a quick, hi, this is Nate, so if you see him around, introduce yourself. So that's it. I may have gone over three minutes, I apologize, but does anybody have any questions for me?
Oh, no, I don't, no.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks, Linda.
All right.
Linda, you got it. We got a few minutes. Do you wanna do the Chamber or Georgia's report? Looks pretty short.
Yeah, Chamber of Commerce. Chamber will start the monthly Oregon Trail Committee meetings on Monday, February 3rd, 5:30 at the Sandstone Cafe. Tenino Oregon Trail Days will be July 25th, 26th, 27th. And the next Chamber luncheon forum is Wednesday, February 19th, noon at the Sandstone Cafe. The EDC, Economic Development Council, plans to open an office in March at the Egg Park. The South Thurston Economic Initiative, Steady, and the next meeting is Friday, February 21st, 8 to 9:30 at the B. Coda Community Center.
Okay, I guess that's about as close as we're gonna get to starting a regular meeting. We'll take a couple of minutes.
TRPC and TPB already met this month, I'll report it on, so I can take them off the list.
Linda, be careful. Go, go out this way. Okay, thank you. First, I will, one letter here. Okay. Well, we don't have a lot of these, a lot of these weren't even gonna have to listen.
Have fun with your assignment.
No. Good night, Linda. Thank you. Thank you.
Pretty good timing.
Yeah. That presentation was interesting.
Yeah, it was.
Really was. Lets, lets us know a little bit more about it. And he's just good at like.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. It's a nice guy.
Making it easily understandable, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it is 7:30. I will call to order the January 28th, 2025 city council meeting for the city of Tenino. Please rise for the flag slide. Linda, you wanna start the conversation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing is agenda approval. You have before you agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Haring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from 1:14, 2025.
Move approval.
So move, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from January 14th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Haring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a consent calendar, consists of, calendar for January 15th, 2025 through January 28th, 2025, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of $32,578.94. Claims checks number 32953 through 32983 and EFTs in the amount of $132,904.41 for a grand total of $165,483.35. I do not see any liquor or cannabis licenses.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Haring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've already done the presentations, so we're to public comments. Anybody wanna make a public comment tonight? You're the only public here, so. Okay. We have no public hearings, no proclamations, old business, new business. Will move to the Thurston County Heritage Grant Award to replace the Tickner Schoolhouse Roof. We received.
Move, I was just gonna say. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Thurston County Heritage Grant Award to replace the Tickner Schoolhouse Roof. Is there any discussion? Haring none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is a resolution, resolution number 2025-03, Tenino PD Funding. There's a motion to approve resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Haring none?
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Worrying my thoughts here. This is apparently the same resolution we did back in November, only for the next year, correct?
This is for 2025, yes.
It says establish it at the 2024 level, it establishes at the 2020.
It changed that.
Right. I, I noticed that it says locking it to the 2025 budget. We don't actually have a working 2025 budget yet. Is this a little premature?
What do you mean, we don't have a working?
We passed our 2025 budget.
We passed it.
As you recall, that was a paper exercise for the state. We had a, we hadn't yet balanced out our, our accounts.
Anything else that has to be done is through amendment, through the, but because we have a working, we have a budget.
Okay, so this could also be changed by amendment, correct? This resolution?
No.
It could be if council wanted to pass it, just like they did if somebody wanted to provide another.
It would have to be another resolution and we, we'd have to pass it.
Okay.
It can be amended. I mean, it can be if people want to.
See, the trouble I have with this is that the budget at this point is still a moving target. We still have things to do. We haven't got a final.
This is the kind of thing that we need to discuss in a retreat and that's exactly why I want one.
Well, let's have a retreat.
Is that kind of thing.
Let's have a retreat before we vote on this resolution then.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Let's see. Next one is ordinance. This is ordinance 3595. I'll get it right on the third try. My dyslexia is kicking in here. Ordinance 935, this is an ordinance amending the City of Tenino Ordinance 2.68.020D Civil Service Commission qualifications. As we have with the, the planning commission, we've kind of broadened who can be on the planning commission to, within the Tenino School District. We've just, we've had so much trouble getting people to apply, so we've tried to widen the area of people that are available for.
Yep, second. And this is doing the same thing.
This is the first reading, right? So this is the first reading of ordinance 935. I'll just read the first and last. Whereas the city council has reviewed the changes set forth below, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Tenino, Washington, that the following changes are hereby amended and adopted as the Tenino City Ordinance 2.68.020, Section D. Any other discussion on this?
No.
In reading this resolution, I noticed that the existing verbiage and the proposed verbiage, verbiage is identical. There's no actual change on this resolution.
Did you notice that?
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, there's a piece of paper behind it that shows it's tracked out what it, what the change is.
I saw that too. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it got attached to the wrong, because I saw it too, but I didn't, is this it right here?
Yep.
Sorry, I got, put it on.
So that's where it reads and then the line that's through it is the change.
If anybody, if you can pass that down to them. That's what it shows where the, it's a pretty simple change, it just, it's not too technical.
So the one I read was on the meeting agenda. Is there a, a public version of this available?
Well, right here.
This is a, did you see this?
This is the one that.
This basically adopting language, it doesn't spell out the change, the changes on the, on the document.
One line says what it currently reads and the next line says that it's going to be changed to read. It's just, we're moving one sentence.
Did you read it yet?
Can you type me into? Bring me one glass of milk.
You guys have been, we haven't seen it.
It's the same thing.
Sugar free cookie.
Well, I propose we, we vote on this next, next.
Member of states and nations who is not a citizen of the United States, a resident of the city of Tenino. Member of Sex Commission who is not a citizen of the United States, a resident of the city of Tenino for at least three years.
The second line says that?
Yep.
Oh, so it's supposed to strike out the three years part.
So we've gotta bring it up again then.
Well, we can, we can have the first reading, have the second one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So it moved, move this as the first reading then, okay.
That's what the first reading is for, is to catch something.
Yeah. You're gonna call for the question.
Any other discussion? All in favor accepting the first reading of ordinance nine, three, five?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll fix that line on the next, for the second reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we got, uh, down to reports. Arch Commission, anything there?
No.
VCB, nothing. Committee, Civil Service Commission. I don't think there's been any meetings. We are two people short still. Uh, I just, I got a note from, uh, Jody Stoltz that if anybody knows anybody willing to serve, uh, unfortunately, Marlena.
Marlena passed away, you know.
Yeah, and then, uh.
John, did you know that?
No.
Yeah, she died.
Wow.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we'll be struggling with the Civil Service Commission, so hopefully part of that is, uh, opening this up will help with that. But, uh, give some thought to anybody you may know that would serve. It's, uh, one of those, doesn't even meet monthly all the time, so.
No, no, when I was on it, we met about every three months or so, I think.
Pretty minimal commitment, so, uh, if anybody has time, that would be appreciated. Uh, facade improvement grant review committee?
We don't, well, because we don't have a grant.
Have any facade yet?
Yet.
Finance Committee, we haven't met since the last meeting. Planning Commission?
I have a report for him.
Okay.
Um, so this is from Adam Carney, Planning Commission. I have not provided an update for a bit. I landed a new job with the state. Wait. I landed a new job, and with the start of legislative session, it's been hectic the last couple of months. With that said, there is not much to report from the Planning Commission. We have been reviewing a couple of sections of the comprehensive plan at our December and January meetings. We hope to be wrapped up with that by spring and hold our first public comment hearings. We still have two vacancies on the Planning Commission and would be incredibly excited to see a new, few applications at the next meeting. As always, we love to see citizens at the meetings and have them ask questions. Thank you, Adam Carney.
Again, I say this one is kind of busy right now, so anybody that's interested in helping direct where the city grows and how it grows, this is a great opportunity to be a part of that, of that planning process, so encourage anybody, or if you know anybody, just put the word out there. We have posted, I believe, saying we have vacancies, but, uh, yeah. So please, if you can think of anybody. Public Safety Committee, I think Public Works Committee. Staff, did you get something from the police chief?
Um, I did not, but I do have something from Parks.
Okay.
Um, from Jessica. She wanted me to report that classes, um, are doing great. Yoga is happening twice a week and is very successful. They're working on, um, planning a senior chair yoga class. Uh, dance classes are doing six-week courses, and they're having great response to those. The Arts Wa Creative District is convening in our city, which is a big deal. Last year it was in Chewila, and they have representatives from all the creative arts districts in the state attend. This will be held on June fifth and sixth. Uh, she's gonna do some events at the New Ag Park, um, event space, and then some at the Kodiak Room. So they'll be right in town and be able to walk. They do a lot of walking and looking at all of our art things, so that's exciting. Family Fun Day, uh, is happening on June twenty first from eleven to five. There will be model railroad, vendors, activity booths, petting zoos, and the pool will be open, so very exciting for that. The museum report, they are piggybacking on Family Fun Day as well. They have a whole new board and would love for a council representative, if anybody should want to attend, um, the Historical Society meetings. Those are the third Monday of the month at seven PM.
What, what day again is it?
The third Monday of the month.
I can do those.
All right. Uh, they also wanted me to let you know that they now have a person that they are paying to be at the museum. It is open every Friday and Saturday.
That's nice.
Yes.
That is so nice.
It is good.
It takes a lot off Jessica's shoulders to.
Jessica, oh, for sure, yes. So very exciting stuff with that.
That's good.
And I'm just gonna wait here, 'cause I have one more.
You're next.
Uh, I have County Commissioner report.
I wanna, I, I wanna say one thing. I'm working with, I'm working on getting, having, um, the, um, Splash Bash Committee donate the.
Family Fun Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we talked a little, we talked a little bit about that with, um, last year we had a couple of issues with some adults, honestly. So we talked about maybe making Children Free Day with a paying adult or something like that, 'cause there was a few adults that.
I remember.
Yes.
I, I, I remember the person. I was sitting right there.
Oh, so.
Okay.
You wanted me to talk treasure or?
Um, I don't have too much to report. Uh, we're still in our audit. I have another meeting with him tomorrow. Hopefully that's wrapping up very soon. We're, we're through like the grunt of it, I believe, and we're just really busy at City Hall. We're down one, and it's just, the days are zooming right by, so we're getting through it.
I would ask to have a little grace, because we are, I mean, we're working with two people, so they're trying to do all the stuff they always do and then fill in for.
Yeah, we know.
Utilities and all those things, so, uh, yeah.
How, how are the, uh, interviews going for the?
We have not scheduled them quite yet.
Anything else?
Um, I have a Commissioner report. I'm gonna do that one. Okay, so this is from Commissioner Fornier. We are monitoring the red flags we are seeing with the federal level regarding funds that are expected to come down from the feds down to local government. We are working with the South County leaders to discuss the new seat that will be made available to South County cities on the Board of Health. I am now the county delegate on the Medic One Board, TCOM Board, and Fire Commissioners Association, and if there are any issues regarding those organizations, I am available. We are about to close our public hearing period on the UGA swaps. JOC can brief the council on this. JOC, um, and it's very important to Tenino. We purchased a new Thurston County Sheriff's Office headquarters in Tom Water. I didn't know that. That's cool. I'm the vice chair again, and we are working to clean up board procedures after a year of learning about the differences between a three-person and a five-person Board of County Commissioners. I'm always available to anyone and hope to come visit in person soon.
JOC?
JOC.
Did you wanna talk about that?
About.
UGA swaps?
Say that again, please?
UGA swaps?
Okay, yeah, I, I will. Uh, I was, I was elected to be the Chair for the, uh, Subcommittee to Urban Growth Area through TRPC, which is part of what we look at anyway, and, uh, if you remember, Wayne came down and talked to us about the land swap and the way it's supposed to work. Uh, we get all these rules and regulations from the state saying you have to grow this way and so much and so forth, but when you look at the urban growth boundaries, it doesn't allow for that a lot of times. I will say even worse than that, most of the time. After years and years of, uh, of the urban growth being as it is, we can now, as long as it's contingent to the city, take a piece of property over here that we, that we were looking at, and we have to build something because the state says we have to, but we can't use that piece of property. We have to, we can now swap it. Well, not quite yet. They're working on getting that passed through. I went to the County Commissioner meeting, and I sat there, and I wanted to talk at the end, but I was running out of time, 'cause I had my, my Fire Commissioner meeting. And there were sixty people at the meeting. I had never seen that many people at a county commission meeting. And they all were there to talk not about the swap, but about a project that's going on that they don't like. And it's going, it, it may happen, it's not definite. It may happen because of the ability to swap one piece of, uh, land for another that's, that's actually usable. Nobody was really there talking about the advantages of what that can do when the state says you have to do this. I don't remember how many ci, uh, how many houses we're supposed to have now because of the new rules that the state put down. I think it was five hundred or something like that.
It's way up there.
Yeah, it's, it's way up there, and there's no place that we can put them. The only other thing that we could possibly even think about doing is building up, and nobody wants that around here, and at least I don't want it around here. Uh, so that's why the, the land swapping became a viable idea. This way, we're not, we're not trying to force a piece of, uh, construction on sensitive, uh, sensitive areas, which means we can't use it anyway. We can take that piece and move to another piece.
That's because of the gopher problem out on the west side, west end, yeah.
So that, that, that's one of the, one of the problems, the wetlands, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I, I, I recommend, and I talked to Wayne about it, and I recommend that we pass that thing. And people that were there to specifically talk about the land swap, they all agreed that it should be passed, 'cause they see what it does, and it's not just one particular piece. It's for every community in Thurston County that may have to do this because the state says you have to do something.
So what, what are they suggesting in our land swap?
Uh, we have, we haven't suggested anything for, no. Because, uh, what, what has to happen first, before that can even begin, the state said yes, we have to approve what the state said how it works. So that's where it is right now. That's why there were sixty people at this, at the meeting. And I guess that most of the people there, there's a, there's a project going on that they don't like the project, so they were talking about that instead of the land swap.
Yeah.
After, uh, uh, the Chair, uh, Mensler, he, he told them upfront, this is kind of nothing to do with a particular project, it's just the wording and how this could work.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I'm guessing it would probably come through our Planning Commission when they're looking at properties.
Yeah, so.
So I'm guessing if, if we were proposing to swap it.
Probably, yeah.
And, and as long as it's continued to us, we can take one piece of property that we can't build on and come over here to, if we find a piece of property that we can, and just swap. Pull, take that out of our UGA, put that back in.
Okey dokey.
Okey dokey.
Okay, uh, I did wanna, under Code Enforcement and Building Inspector, I know we just heard the letter from the, one of our, uh, business owners here, that I did wanna point out that, uh, there's a very nice article in the paper about the fitness facility down here, and they were very complimentary, complimentary of our Building Inspector coming in and helping them get back on track. They had hired a contractor that was, seemed like, uh, causing some problems for them, and they, they were, in the article, very appreci, appreciative of our Building Inspector coming in and helping them work through the problems and get back on track and got open, so I just wanted to point out, uh, we do get positive ones also, not just, you know. Yeah, so that's all. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, uh, real quick, uh, since our last meeting, I am on what's called the Left One Board. So all, all firefighters and, uh, police officers that are part of the Left One Plan have medical coverage for their, basically, their whole life. And so this board basically looks at claims and, and approves those. Not many left anymore, because they're all, were, you know, hired a long time ago, and it's been a long time since Left One was not around anymore.
Well, it's like tourism, tourism one.
Yeah, so it's not, we don't meet very often, but, uh, I am part of that, and it's, it's kind of important for those people that, uh, uh, we had an Ag Park meeting, uh, I was on Zoom on that one. Uh, buildings are, you know, I, you know, probably, they had their first event, uh, this last Friday. They had a comedy thing, uh, out there for the, to raise money for the schools, just kind of a soft opening for the event center there. Heard a lot of good things about the facility. Uh, in March, probably, uh, they're gonna start the landscaping. Uh, it's hard to do this time of year with the cold, and so they just wanna wait till March. The plants survive better. If you, you know, plant them in, uh, later in the year, so hopefully in March, they're gonna start doing that, uh, landscaping. Uh, right now, we have a tentative kind of, uh, uh, grand opening in April, right, Jen?
Correct.
No, no, no specific date yet, but look for April sometime for some, a grand opening out there. Uh, we're still working with the Colvins on the meat processing facility. Uh, they came, we talked to them. Uh, I can't remember. It's probably been a couple of weeks ago about this, their facility and what they wanna do out there and being able to expand. So we're trying to work with them to, to optimize the placement of their facility, so we can use all this other land for other, other people interested. So that's ongoing out there. Uh, apparently, there is another, we just, just heard that there's another company that's, uh, interested and has made contact with our real estate representative to go look at a, look at the property out there, so that's encouraging. Uh. I didn't miss the study meeting. We talked about that one. Uh, the Ag Park had their final inspection, inspect, well, temporary occupancy, so that was part of this whole grand, this event. They had to get their temporary, uh, occupancy, and it wasn't final because the landscaping isn't completed, and that's part of the, getting their final occupancy. So I think everything in the buildings is good. Just, they're just waiting for that, uh, to complete that landscaping, to have their final occupancy. Some big things there. Uh. Let's see. I think that is about it up to today.
Okay.
Uh, Be That?
Be That. Uh, they would like Tenino to know that, uh, they have another event, um, on the thirtieth, Thursday, two days. Another screening at the high school from six to eight on the effect of our digital, um, society on teenagers and how it influences their choices when it comes to vaping and drugs and alcohol. Um, so I encourage everyone to go there. They, they also have med, uh, safes or lockups for, uh, those people who think they need to lock up meds at home for whatever reason. Um, so go. Six to eight, at the high school on Thursday.
Thank you. Solid Waste Advisory Committee, do you guys have a meeting?
Um, Solid Waste is next week.
Okay. TCOM nine one one. School Board?
Uh, the boys' basketball team is back in first place. And then, uh, it might have been in the independent, but, um, uh, what's his name? Austin Gonya signed to play baseball down, down in Lynnfield.
Yeah.
So.
That's great, cool.
And I can add, the, uh, School Board had its meeting yesterday. I regret that I missed it. Uh, our next council meeting, I'll have a report on that.
Okay.
Good.
Get the paper. Find out the latest. Legislature, I know Linda has a couple things she wanted to report.
I do. All right, I want everybody to take note of this. House Bill ten forty-five would expand interest arbitration to exclusive bargaining representatives of cities, towns, and county law enforcement officers regardless of population of the employing local government. We don't want that. I encour, I encourage everybody here, and I can't do it, to call the legislative hotline number eight hundred five six two six thousand and have a message sent to your legislators saying, no, we don't want this. Okay. The next one is really good, I think. Senate Bill five zero six zero. The brief summary is it creates a law enforcement hiring grant program within the Criminal Justice Training Commission for the purpose of assisting local and tribal law enforcement agencies in hiring new enforcement officers. The bottom line is, it's gonna pay up to, where is it? I think it's seventy-five, up, oh, the bill contains an appropriation of totaling a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, but it's something like seventy-five, they'll pay like seventy-five percent of the officer's wages.
For three years, I believe.
For three years, yeah.
If I remember this one right, I saw it a while back, uh, I think we're obligated after that, after those funds run out to keep the officer for a certain amount of time.
Probably.
Which, which we, when I first became, uh, came on council, feds did something like that. And after that money ran out, we had to keep the officers for two more years, and that put a major strain.
But we have to.
On our, on our budget.
But don't we have to, don't they have to sign something after we pay for their training to stay on for a certain length of time?
I think so.
Oh, I don't know if we've done that in the past.
I don't know, we can.
Well, I thought we did.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Yeah. You should look into that.
I would say we need, that's something we need to be, the chief didn't mention that there's a time that they had to stay after.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it further and let, I'll report at the next meeting exactly, uh.
Yeah, can we push that?
What it is. I'll, I'll report at the next meeting. 'Cause there are things, then, then, there are things that, when you make those phone calls, if we need amendments to these bills, that's when you wanna tell them. 'Cause there are things, then, then, there are things that, when you make those phone calls, if we need amendments to these bills, that's when you want to tell them. And we get calls like that all the time on the hotline. Please, I support this bill if they'll do da-da-da-da-da-da, so.
I think the other piece of that one, this, for people to know, it has to be, you can't do laterals with this, you can't, it has to be a new, because they're, they don't want them, just people just swapping, swapping police departments and paying for it, they want new people, they're trying to increase the police force, not just move people around, so it does require training, uh, training period.
And this is, this is another, uh, interesting one. It permits law enforcement agencies, civil service agencies, including city firefighters, uh, city police and county sheriff's offices and prosecuting attorney's offices to consider applications from persons legally authorized to work in the United States under federal law. In other words, if they've got a work permit, then, then the cities can hire them to do.
Criminals part of work?
Yeah. Oh, oh, this is another one of those that I don't think we want, but requires cities and towns to allow neighborhood stores and neighborhood cafes to be permitted in residential zones. In other words.
For us, it's not, it's not a good thing, but they do prove, you go to New York, New Jersey area, they got them all over the place, but that's, that's how that whole area was developed anyway. We had an opportunity a few years ago with Horizon Point and, uh, the complex out in Hawks Prairie to do something like that, and it didn't come around. So on a case-by-case area, it could be a good thing, could be bad.
The only thing I don't like about it is the state's telling us.
That we can't.
How we have to zone.
Yeah.
And I think that's what we have a planning commission for, not, why, 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 why would this, why would the state tell us how we want to zone our town? You know, why, our city?
The, the idea is a nice idea, they just need to change the words where we get to decide what we want to do.
Well, that's what they're trying to take away.
Yeah.
They're trying to take that away. We, we already say that, and they're trying to take it away, so that's my report.
Thank you.
But I will come back with that fifty-sixties with more information on it.
Thank you. Okay, public comment number two, you wanna, you have anything to comment on?
No, I have questions, because they're just more, I'm just curious.
Okay. Uh, announcements, I will start out this, uh, I will be gone at the next meeting, so Linda, you're in the hot seat since you just accepted, uh, yeah.
The next, so it's the first meeting in February?
First meeting in February.
All right.
Any other announcements?
I have one. Uh, I got a call yesterday from, uh, uh, the daughter-in-law of Yang's Gardner, a World War Two veteran from Tenino. They're going to have a, a celebration for him, March the first, at the Tenino Eagles Hall, honoring his one hundredth birthday, which is on February twenty-sixth.
And he's gonna be a hundred?
Yes. He's a nineteen-year-old, uh, crew member of the USS, on the Minesweeper USS Tide, which, uh, patrol up, uh, the Normandy coast on June the sixth.
Oh, my God.
And struck a mine and sunk the next morning. He holds the flag as the last arriving crew member of that ship.
Oh, that's something.
Is that gonna be in this week's paper?
Uh, yes, there's a, I did a story on him being presented the flag a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So Minesweepers.
So it's, when is it now?
March first.
March first.
One to four P M. at the Eagles Hall.
Okay, okay.
Is it Tenino Grabber?
Yeah, that's what he said. It's being put on by the.
That's a Saturday. That's a Saturday, it's the same time.
He did live in.
Yeah, he's a crab feet.
Oh.
But, uh, yeah. He was, he was a member of the charter crew of the Tide.
Well, I might have to go.
I figured out he was nineteen when it sank.
Bring your crab to the Eagles.
Get him proud and take him to the Eagles. Okay, uh, there's no other business, we're adjourned.
Hey.
Non-debatable motion.
I was waiting for that.